Topic discussion or the the topic to that for the first stage in three minutes. As anyone here would like to discuss. Say now we'll move the charges up there.
We got luck, Steve.
Today make it short. Sir, lots of saving. No, I have nothing to report. Well, we're down number four, which is just supposed to be here in twenty twenty-three. The vote by.
I'll have a copy of the proposed budget in front of you. As a reminder, most of you have had several years or more on board. So, you know, we start this process almost as soon as we finish the process. We've already had discussions about what we're going to do next fiscal year. The other thing I like to share and remind everybody about the budget, it was like something I heard about the Constitution years ago. It changes the inventory. And as you know, this thing has always changed. We've already made changes. That will be affected here. Nothing worth actually going through the process of changing all the numbers. But some significant changes that we'll share with you as we discuss this. So if you turn to printed on the right, bottom right, page two, that's the Chancellor's budget message. And every year it's got information in there that's really very cool. It captures all the important items in the budget. It's easy to see it in written format as opposed to dollars. And I'll point some of those out for you that I think are the most important that we have in here. And if we start on the second paragraph, second sentence, third sentence down says, the faculty and staff are our number one resource. And we need to make every effort to attract and retain the best and brightest talent to achieve our mission of providing accessible and educational opportunities to communities that we serve. In the wake of escalating inflation and a very competitive job market, it's imperative that we address the needs of our staff to the best of our ability. Therefore, this budget includes a two and a half percent increase to the current pay scales and retention recruitment initiatives for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Going back once again to the beginning, if you remember the first, the first budget workshop we had, the discussion was, you know, we're going to have a hard time balancing this budget. Let's not do anything for salary increases. And that was the initial pitch from Bob that I had talked over with the rest of the administration and Holly and I had talked about it. We all weren't thrilled about it, but we knew that that was what we needed to try to do to balance the budget. Shortly after that, I got a call from Holly that said, Bob, I know this is what we're trying to do, but I'm having a harder, harder time getting anybody except a job. And we're losing people all the time because we are not paying what other folks are paying. So what can we do? And I said, Holly, I've already told you, we can't do anything. You're out of luck. I mean, that's how I started every conversation with somebody. When they want something, I would go, no, no, you always have to talk with them. And then I said, oh, let me see if I can figure something out. And she said, well, let's think about it for a little bit. I said, okay. So we hung up and I made them a phone call. And as soon as I said, we'll think about it, I said, let me call the chancellor, call Dr. Carter. We started talking about it. And we, first of all, we remembered in all of you as well, that last fiscal year, we added twenty-three million dollars to the reserves in the bottom line. And we said, you know, that's the largest bottom line positive fiscal year the college ever had. We know that this year that we're currently operating in twenty-two was going to be tough to have a positive bottom line. And it was going to be difficult in twenty-three if we do this pay increase, but we felt we needed to do it to keep the quality staff we have and to continue to recruit quality staff. The nice thing about it is the loss that we're going to face in the current year or next year will probably be less than half of what the gain was from the previous year because just because we're, we know we have that excess, we're still very frugal with our fiscal dollars. And we, we do the best we can to keep costs down. So this budget, if you notice on the very last paragraph, says that the budget presented for fiscal year twenty-three reflects a deficit of two point six million, which includes transfers from reserves for capital purchases and the cost of salary increases and incentives. The dollar amount that was, that we've transferring from reserves to cover those pay raises is three point eight million dollars. The nice part about that, once again, a lot of money, but to remind you all, the biggest piece of that two point eight billion is that incentive number, which is that's a one-time number. It's in this next fiscal year's budget. And it's not like if we would have decreased the pay scales by that dollar amount, we'd have been paying that every year for as long as we go. This way, it's one time. We're hoping, like probably everybody in the nation is, that the economy starts to sell out a little bit. Inflation rate goes down and we can get back to the normal pay increase to go align with the cost of living, which is less than eight or nine percent of the time and more than one, two percent of the time, which will get us back in line. So those, those are really the most important items dollar-wise in this, in this statement. The other one is, next to the last paragraph, we talk about items that we do as far as, I know we've had discussions before with board members and we normally have them a lot when you're a new board member. Just to remind you, and you guys know it, you know it, but we still tell you that, you know, we don't just work on board days. You know, we're, we're, we're working all the time. We're looking at them every so often. So, you know, we're always looking at, at what's going to happen. We're always looking at the future. I mean, honestly, we're already looking at stuff that's going to happen next fiscal year. So if you look at this paragraph, there's, there's a statement in there that starts with the Quantico and Fort Wainwright sites were closed this year due to low enrollment. At this time, we continue to monitor all worldwide off-site locations to evaluate their standalone viability with significant changes anticipated in the upcoming year. Similarly, there'll be a continuous review of programs to ensure effectiveness and meeting the priorities outlined in our strategic plan. So we're always looking at programs and we're looking at locations. What's not listed in here, and it's something that's already happening. Very soon, we're talking end of September, we will be closing our Hawaii and our San Diego locations. Enrollments are solo there and with, with the changes that have happened in BALE with all of the military, San Diego being Navy, Hawaii being mostly Army, but with the changes that are happening with all of those soldiers, seamen, airmen, Marines with their tuition assistant requirements, it's harder and harder for them to get into the classes. And in some places, we're just not able to survive. The Navy, sure, you know the information better than I do, but you have to be like in your final year of your first ditch before you can get class. And by that, many of them have decided it's not worth the effort to mess around with it. Let me finish and I'll go, I'll do it afterwards when, when I'm not in there full time. So this budget that you have includes those two locations for the whole year because this decision wasn't made until the last several days. So this budget that has a two point six million dollar loss has nine hundred thousand dollars worth of loss included for two locations that are only going to be here for a month. So that'll already take care of some of that loss. We're going to continue to look at those numbers as we go throughout the year. Dr. Carter shared with me this morning, the Dr. A and the Continental Department of Campus Dean are going to look at all the sites to determine how those enrollments are going. And if there's a pattern that they don't feel they're going to be able to correct, potentially make more decisions, and we'll continue to look at programs. Those who've been there on the board for several years know that you know, in the past eight or 10 years, we've, we've closed down a site in the Pacific Far East that we had a contract that we ran and get out of because it wasn't performing. We just did it today. Yeah, because, you know, we, we don't, we are well past the years of wanting to plant flags and to keep programs operating for the benefit of the college. So those are some things that I wanted to share later on in the agenda. Dr. Carter has some information she'll share with you about Europe. That contract has another year on it. And she'll share information with you about, about the future of that contract. So that, that kind of sums up everything. The, the next important page to look at and the other page that we'll discuss in the proposed budget is page fifteen. And it gives you the details of all the information that we just talked about. It gets you, you know, this is, is used to the the revenue and expenditure page that you see monthly when you get presented the financial statements and this, this mirrors that page. And it's the same number we talked about. You can see the second column is the twenty twenty-three budget year and you can see that it has the bottom line of twenty million dollars of negative deficit budget. Fortunately, we have the reserves that will, will offset that. Now, I'm going to tell you, just because we've got that deficit budget, that doesn't mean we're still not going to shoot to try to bring that budget into black. We already talked about how some of it is going to happen immediately with those two closures. You know, the one thing about a budget, there, there are many positions in this budget that are open today and it will take a while to fill them. There will be other positions that will come open. So you always save some dollars in the personnel side because not every position is filled the entire 12 months, but you have to have it in the budget because the possibility exists that you could have more filled. So, so we will work to keep this number at low again. I was also, I, I was also very conservative with my tuition and fee numbers. You'll notice if you look at it, we actually have lower tuition and fees budgeted than we had in the previous year. What I used to, to come up with that number where you kind of look at it, it's actually the thirty-one point one million, very top number on the right, the far right column, is actually five percent greater than what we're going to run in the current twenty-two fiscal. So it is an increase of five percent, but you have to remember, we already approved the tuition increase, which accounts for about a three percent increase. So that makes up three percent of it. The other two percent of it is anticipated enrollment increases. Yes, I said increases. If you'll remember, when we met a little over a month ago, I shared with you at the time that our two-day enrollments compared to a year ago were up twenty-one percent. And I said, well, that was great. It's been a long time since we've seen numbers positive. I told you, listen, I would have bought everybody a steak dinner if we remained at twenty-one percent because it, it was just for whatever reason, this year the enrollments were coming early as opposed to late. But as of this morning, when I saw numbers, we're still up nine point three percent for the fall with seven days remaining. So we're going to be positive for the fall, which is the first time and we've probably had an increase from one year compared to the trailing year. It's probably been five or six fiscal years since that's happened. So I feel comfortable with the two percent increase that we have in here for the whole year in this budget. So that's, that is the, the major item to talk about. As we have here, everything else we've discussed most of the times with the board. So if you would review what you have, any questions that you may have prior to our next meeting when we actually approve this, you can contact, Chancellor, contact me directly, contact Dr. Carter, any of us, almost all of y'all, I think. My cell phone number if you want to call me fine and dandy. We can talk about any of this stuff. So any questions that you may have, we're more than happy to answer. While this is a deficit budget, I still think it's an awful good budget and I'm proud of it. If you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer them.
We're going to do due diligence and we appreciate that very much. There's lots of factors that we haven't discussed that we all know about. The inflation factor is definitely there. I don't know if Bruce has picked up any of that. Honestly, I want the legislature to be contemplating for this next session. We've got to put some pressure on those people, direct representatives. They need some more money from the state. We're not getting our per share. We're still dedicated to supporting the community for us, for the university. They support getting government grants for research and development. Different thing. It doesn't have anything to do with local communities.
And you're, you're spot on with it, sir, because we, we just recently had to submit the legislative appropriations request for the next biennium. And even though it's a request, we were told not to ask for anything more than we got in the current year. So, you know, that's already the plan. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't put enough pressure on them from every source we can, hopefully change that. But that's the way the request started.
And that's one of the reasons we have the CACC and CCAT. But they're there to help support community colleges on cross-society, cross-state. Not us, it's the other forty-nine also. Now that I can remember those organizations, you're talking shit, they're just not sure that they understand that we care and we need their help and support. You got a comments question? Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Yes, please. I'm going to file and discuss the Europe campus aspect, Dr. Carter.
Good afternoon, everyone. This, this is a very difficult presentation. How long have we been in Europe?
Fifty years.
Just by way of background, for the last two years, Dean Kindred and I have been having discussions with Chancellor Yanakos with regard to the future of Europe campus. And as you all know, we did not bid the CENTCOM contract last year for various reasons. We, we couldn't cover our expenses and we were constantly running in the red on the contract. It was difficult to operate locally. We were subject to local laws and we had to get sponsorships and that sort of thing. And general, we even knows after the contract was closed out, we were sued. So we went through months of litigation and finally we were cleared of that. It was just never ending. So it's very difficult. It was very difficult to operate in Africa and the Middle East under the constraints of that particular contract. And with no real support from the US government because we made the decision to go in and provide the services, which that was honorable, I think, to serve our service members. But it, it became increasingly difficult. And so we came to you last year and we, we let you know that the CENTCOM contract, we did not bid the follow-on. And last time I took a, they were not even give anyone to, to bid that contract. And so, but during, like I said, during the last two years, we've, we've been talking about the future of Europe and we are at a crossroads at this point. And where we are is in the final year of a ten-year tri-services contract where the only services we provide are VOTEC instruction. And, and that's key because it was the VOTEC instruction line item for the Pacific Far East contract that, that caused us to go ahead and invoke a clause with that contract allowing us to, to terminate early. The ten-year tri-services contract included those such clause. And so periodically you all would ask, well, what are we doing in Europe? Why are we still there? We were under contract. And we never defaulted on the contract and we didn't, we didn't want to start. So with that, the, the final year of that contract began August one. And like I said, prior to that, we were having conversations with, with the chief. And Dean Kindred and I came to the conclusion that it is, it is impossible at this point to continue operations in Europe under the present circumstances, which there's no indication of any, any changes or any relief. As you all know, the current TA cap is two hundred and fifty dollars. The chancellor and Dr. A and myself, we were at the CCMB conference this year. And the question was asked of the government directly, if, if there was any consideration in increasing that cap. In the end, they accepted, which means we simply didn't know. And so in addition to the TA cap, there are other changes that make it difficult for, for soldiers. And it, and it was all exacerbated by the army ignite issue, which you all are aware of. So as we approached this final year, we made a difficult decision to not bid the follow-on contract. And so just to put it in perspective, you know, we talk about declining enrollments and Bob Liberty likes to tell me the enrollment numbers don't matter unless they come from Dr. Welsh. And so Dr. Welsh provided us with some, some numbers. In fiscal year two thousand eighteen, the Europe campus had a total of four thousand eight hundred enrollments. Last year, with the, at the conclusion of the CENTCOM contract, we had two thousand fifty-three, that's fifty-three percent decline. This year, three hundred thirty-nine, that's a ninety-three percent decline. And so when you look, if you recall from the AFR for the last several years, the bottom line number for Europe was one, a loss of one point five million dollars in two thousand eighteen, two point two million in two thousand nineteen, two point four million in two thousand twenty. Twenty twenty-one, it was a million dollar loss, but as Mr. Liberty reminded me, that was due to the, the FERC funding and the, the lost revenue. This year through June, just two months ago, two million dollar loss. And so we as an administration just believe it is fiscally irresponsible for us to continue operations under the current circumstances with no relief in sight. The government is not, they won't put a guaranteed line item in the contract to be as they did with the case years ago, covering our administrative costs and some of those other things. And so we're just, we're just kind of out there. It's voluntary education. So the government cannot guarantee us a particular number of hours that students will take. It's all voluntary education. That the tri-services contractor, there are four schools, Central Texas College, the University of Maryland, Oklahoma University. Embry-Riddle, thank you, sir. I see E R A U, Embry-Riddle, Air and Medical University. And right now, Embry-Riddle, you know, they're, they'll probably be the last man standing simply because they have a real niche, you know, with regards to aviation. And so OU has already put in their notice, not allowing any new enrollments. University of Maryland Global Campus, they're waiting to see what happens in Poland. They're about ready to pull out as well. The government hosted a tour of Poland with CTC as well as, as Maryland because they're wanting us to go into Poland now. At the time, they didn't even have an head center. Finally, they have one. But it's not, the infrastructure is not there for our people to move there and, and set up a program and all programs. They want an EMT program. We can only imagine the cost of that. So so it, it, again, it's, it's, it's almost impossible to, to even break even. It is impossible to break even under the present circumstances. So we just wanted to let you know that we will not bid the follow-on contract. However, I do need you to also know that we have three smaller contracts. We have a small arms maintenance contract, which ends ends on September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. So it ends a few months after this current contract. And Bob priced that contract to stand alone, whereas in years past, we'd actually priced all the Europe contracts using quantities of scales. And we had people here, there and everywhere building to different contracts. But this particular contract, he, he priced it standalone, so we're okay, but we won't bid a follow-on either because we're not going to remain in Europe with that contract. And then we have two smaller ones. Fortunately, we have termination clauses that allow us to get out of the contracts before the actual end date. So in setting our timeline, we will back into the, the closure of those contracts as well. So at this time, just wanted to let you know that we will be moving our footprint from the, from the Europe theater in effect in twenty twenty-three.
Did I call for sure?
That's sad though, because, you know, I, I, when I got my start in the army, nineteen eighty-eight, I was in the army. That's when we had two corps of soldiers, four divisions, two ESKRs. Like a lot of soldiers. And then I survived the drawdown. We still had soldiers stationed there. But over the last, course of last few years, we've gone from a concept of station soldiers in Europe to rotating soldiers in Europe. So when you're on a rotation, which is sort of like a deployment, so people shoot at you. You don't have that opportunity to go get your distance and get your college education, which you need. When I took, when I took my final college course, get my bachelor's degree, I was in Afghanistan. And luckily, at that point, because I was a certain first class at the time, I, I was stuck on fire. Not my will, but my battalion said, you're staying. And I had opportunity to take six college courses, uh, six days of college on Saturday for like six hours. And that's the only way I was able to finish my course. But if you're on a rotational set, you don't have all that free time to do that. I don't understand why they wouldn't, the government wouldn't allow us to be able to do the administrative part of it, to pay for administrative. Because sooner or later, we're going to go back to stationary troops. And to keep that core concept in place where soldiers can start going to college again, because contrary part of the belief, when you get up to that level where I was at for that certain, certain first class, that certain, certain major, you know, they emphasize getting college education to, to achieve those ranks. And if you have soldiers that don't have the time to go to college and stuff, you're hurting yourself and you're hurting the core concept of the NCO Corps, which I, it, it just upsets me to hear that that's happening. And I don't know where the priorities are right there because sooner or later, those, those soldiers need that professional education and that college education and those younger soldiers that aren't going to stay. But historically, about four percent of the military actually retires. Everybody else ETS is right. But you don't have, you don't, you're not giving the soldier, a young troop, a chance to get started on his education before he gets out of the army. And then I, I, I think they should raise that tuition cap, but we're stuck and I understand that. It's a sad state of affairs. We've got a college that was there when I was private is going to cease operations now, which is crazy. We'd have to find some way around it sooner or later. But, and I, I wish it wasn't happening. I wish it wasn't happening. I can remember CTC in Darmstadt, Germany, when I got there. I, I didn't get my, I didn't get my degree through CTC. I got it through University of Maryland, University College, which was back then. But I remember CTC all over the place in Europe, all over the place. And that says a lot for our institution here. And I just wish they would change and make it more accommodating for all of us, all, all, all of those universities that are represented in Europe right now. It, it's, it's good for them, it's good for us, it's good for the soldiers and airmen and sailors that are stationed up in Marines that are out there in Europe. But sooner or later, they're going to go from a rotational strategy to a stationed status strategy because it's going to cost too much money to keep rotating soldiers back and forth, back and forth. I understand that. And there's several of us that are veterans. We understand that stuff too. Why, just keep, keep at it.
Well, just, just so you all know, we, we've notified the government. I sent a letter of communication to the K O and let her know. And they were disappointed, but they certainly understand that. Mr. Yanakos and I learned that when we were closing out CENTCOM. And Jeff Allen said, we knew this day would come. I mean, the expectations of the government and the demands without the support needed to provide the service would cause the department to walk away. So we've notified the K O and we will wind down Europe. July thirty-first is the last date of that contract, but we will begin winding down and closing that site almost quarterly and then back into some of those tracks.
So the inside of education agrees with us and have good relationship with them. It's the uniform side that's, that's the issue. There's no way they can fix that at all. We've tried for nine years now.
That's like the proudest moment of my military career is when I got my degree. That was awesome.
If, if we could do something, would it be through the administrative side or the political side?
We can't, we can't do anything. It's a.
I mean, it's, it's more than making these things known.
You can't. They got bigger problems than Washington than this. And they've moved, they've moved, they've moved the thing with the army. This, this contract's with the army to Army University. So the BALE people, they don't have any money. They have no clout. And that's who we work with. That's who all the schools work with. We have talked to the guys in uniform. They're signing for us.
Well, part of the problem is overall.
Now, part of the problem is overall, the economy is of scale. It's the Air Force created um, you know, a college years ago, and now that it's, it's what we do. And the Army neighbor said, yeah, maybe so. And then somebody goes, well, this ought to be a DOD thing. We don't have the defense policy. So the whole thing is a limbo. So to answer your question, it's all it's all pure politics. It's uh, you know, there's nothing that you can do at this level.
Michelle, thank you for your report without tissues. It was a very important report.
Thank you.
We have a conference. Thank you, I'll throw.
Next item on the agenda is the Fort Hood renaming recommendations. Mr. Goodson.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chancellor Knopf. At the request of this board committee, we formally named the CTC site of Fort Hood. The committee was comprised of the following members. Ms. Brenda Coley, Board of Trustee. Ms. Diane Castillo, Military Program Liaison. Ms. Jackie Hare, Dean of Fort Hood Continental Sites. Mr. Bob Liberty, Associate Deputy Chancellor of Public Management. And Fennel Zallos, Associate Deputy Chancellor of Business Services. Our conclusion is as follows. The naming committee recommends Central Texas College to keep the naming structure of Fort Hood as Central Texas College Act, insert the name of the installation. This recommendation factors in our SAC COC requirements and how the DOD portals display information so that soldiers may determine the site they wish to attend and how they access their tuition assistance. The reasons for these recommendations are a result of the following considerations. Number one, a new name has been identified for Fort Hood. On August eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the naming commission appointed by the United States Congress released its recommendations to the Secretary of Defense for final approval. Congress is to receive the final report by October first, two thousand twenty-two, and the Pentagon will have until early two thousand twenty-four to carry out the commission's suggestions. Presently, the naming recommendation for Fort Hood is to rename it Fort Galassos in commem- commem- commemoration of General Richard E. Galassos. The second consideration is to avoid any hardships to our institution and our soldiers. CTC should follow the name of the installation for the following reasons. The potential hardship exists where our G to SAC COC requirements, which provided the college use certain naming terms with precision. So what I mean by this is that, for example, we're to call something a campus. Under SAC COC guidelines and rules, that invites a lot of regulation and duplication of services. So for example, if we were to say Fort Hood or Fort Galassos Campus or insert name Campus, we would then require to have, for example, a whole human resist apartment there, thus duplicating services that currently we facilitate from Central Campus. The second issue, which requires again, precision within the naming, is how the DOD website pulls information and then displays that information so that our soldiers are able to determine the site they wish to attend and how they're able to request their tuition assistance. So when we're looking at what are the implications of um we've decided to choose any other name than the installation, the problem is if you are a soldier and you're going into one of the portals, the way it lists our sites, it would have Central Texas Navy Campus. And then it lists Fort Silver, Fort Brad, Fort England, and we keep going. If we renamed something other than something consistent with what the installation is, it would create the confusion for the soldier as to where they were trying to take their forces. But then when they're requesting their, their tuition assistance and they have to report where they're going, it would potentially create um another issue for them in how they're able to get that. And so because of that, we looked at the simplest and what we thought was the common denominator here, which was to me, consistent with the installation here. And therefore, um, those are our problems. Happy to answer any questions.
I'll follow up. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Goodson? Glad to be bringing that forward, Mr. Goodson.
Yes, sir.
Next item on agenda is the um annual fifty thousand K vendor list for the twenty twenty-two.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Board, Members of the Board. I'm here to seek board approval of the fifty K list. If you'll recall, the fifty K list author- authorizes administration issued blanket purchase orders to vendors of listed given services for purchases of fifty thousand or more in the aggregate during the fiscal year beginning September one, two thousand twenty-two. Please note, all vendors on the fifty K list are either part of a cooperative or under contract, and we're procured in accordance with the Texas statute of law and CTC policies. Just one other thing I want to add before I invite questions is I always evaluate these year to year to see how we're doing on the request for DPO. We're actually down three percent. And so even with inflation and some of the issues that we saw, we saw rise a bit last year. But overall, because we established contracts and we did our due diligence through this script this week, we were able to as of now to say something like that. So it's actually a three percent decrease in our request for these guys. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next item is the ideal impact on your safety condition, Mr. Goodson.
Good afternoon. Um, this particular topic, uh, we would like to defer until the September board meeting and board workshop.
Okay. Would just for you to explain the independent licensed architect I L A ADA accessibility service.
Yes, sir. Um, as uh you know, that uh we are currently in the process of a Department of Justice ADA project. The uh college issued a new request for qualifications, twenty-two dash zero two four for architectural accessibility services. The RFQ engaged a new I L A to help certify any of the improvements that were made according to uh the DOJ. Uh, Mr. Prue, who is the current I L A, had notified us that he has family health issues. And because of that, uh, was going to be closing down and would be no longer servicing the college past the end of the year. In order to help facilitate a smooth transition, we decided to issue the RFQ. We had received two uh responses, proposals to our RFQ. One was uh Michael Mars Architects out of Temple, Texas. And the other one was uh Mr. Bozey Consulting out of Cottonwood Shores. Uh, we follow our typical two-step process in evaluating both of the uh proposals. Um, and Michael Mars was um selected as the most qualified vendor. He is also previously approved as an I L A for the C E O. So the project costs, uh, thus far, we've actually been within the predicted range between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We certainly feel comfortable that um the remaining work uh on an annual basis should not exceed the hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, and with that, we'll be bringing forward a recommendation um next week to approve Michael Mars as the new I L A for the A D A project. And I I did want to go ahead and remind, I I didn't want to make a assumption here that uh we are in the middle of a three-year A D A project. Um, we've completed a little over a year of that, uh, and the I L A is a requirement from the Department of Justice. Happy to answer any question.
Any questions, Mr. Goodson? Thank you, sir. And while you're there, tell us about the facilities management contract we know for Life Fund and Texas Affairs Group, Joel's Flooring and Winters Environmental Consulting.
Yeah, so at, at the moment, I consolidated on those just for um ease of review. But for the board meeting, each of these, we've broken out as a separate individual item for approval. Um, we use these four vendors on an ongoing basis throughout the course of the year. Heights Lumber is in the fourth and final option period. Uh, we use them for building products. Uh, estimated spend not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Texas Materials, uh, as you may remember, we uh use for most of the uh larger um projects across campus related to asphalt work. This particular one is really um going to be focused on small, you know, patchwork here or there and um is estimated not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Anything larger than that, we would bring back to the board, which would result in a capital project for approval. Uh, Joel's Flooring, as you use him uh for a number of projects uh throughout the past. Um, this would be uh extending option year three of his Jock contract. Uh, estimated spend, again, is not as, is uh not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and then the final one is Wood Environmental Consulting. Uh, they do all of the environmental consulting and testing for the college. Whether it were to be asbestos or any type of hazardous material, indoor air quality such as that. Um, the uh, we uh do not estimate that the spend would be more than a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the main thing uh in the use of wood would be as we look at doing additional capital projects. Um, and it would require us to do some type of testing of materials for asbestos or something else. Uh, so with it, uh, the recommendation will be made next week for the renewal of each of these four vendors.
Any questions, Mr. Goodson? We're here. Well, number nine, um, and number eleven is the cyber insurance policy, Mr. Murphy.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Chancellor, Board members. Today, uh, I bring before you the size of insurance policy that is approved next week. We cover the period of September twenty twenty-two to August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. We're requesting the ability to exercise option year one for the cyber insurance coverage provided by Resilience Insurance and managed by Alliant Insurance Services. The cyber insurance and security consultant premium for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three academic year is roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is an eleven percent increase, or seventeen thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars. Um, this is a minimal increase by industry standards. Um, as you, we're aware that cyber attacks are increasing more and more. And we're going to protect our infrastructures from um cost us in the long run. Um, because our adversaries seek cyber as a way to conduct ransom attacks and other such attacks. So we are pleased with the performance of both Resilience and Alliant, and we recommend approval next week at the board meeting. Some of your questions.
Yeah, dollar amount associated with that.
The total dollar amount is one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the tax payment investment zone. We come up with that, uh, all of yours. Thirteen years ago, we appointed, uh, maybe the big, you're still on there, sir. I'll name you all a briefing of that, uh. Four months ago, I think, but they were in progress. I'll talk to the city, uh, when they call me and say, we need to review this. And they don't have anything on the drawing board. They don't have any scheduled meetings. They don't have any more information other than what I did read and evidently. Hopefully, what happened is that old movie theater area off of Thirty-Eighth Street. And I put some kind of gorgeous sort of, I didn't know if people liked it, so. There's nothing that the money that we collected has been spent or out now, it's just accumulated. So we still have a requirement to find the city secretary with the name of my trustee. He doesn't have one for the next one. There's three years, two, two years, so twenty-two to twenty-four. Based on that, we'll vote on that next time. If anybody wants to volunteer to do that, we got a set size, no problem. So, no, that's, I mean, that's receiving the letter from the, from the uh city manager, Ted Tagle. And he basically outlined what General Weaver has mentioned to you. So we have a decision to make, as he said, elect someone new or reappoint General Weaver. Okay. But that will move on. Uh, Foundation Board Member nominees. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, Chancellor Yanopoulos, Board of Trustees. On behalf of the CTC Foundation Board, I have the privilege of presenting two nominees for membership of the CTC Foundation Board. Each candidate has already completed their nomination application that was submitted to our Chair, Dr. Anderson. The applications then were forwarded to the Review Committee, who presented them to the Foundation Board on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh. The board approved the nominees as presented. The nominees are Mr. Todd Fox. Mr. Fox is the President of the Fort Hood National Bank. He served in the U S Army for twenty-four years and then retired Colonel in two twenty, in two thousand eighteen. He left, was assigned to Fort Hood, where he served as the Garrison Commander for Fort Hood and the Chief of Staff of Free Corps for Fort Hood. He serves on multiple committees and boards in the community. The second nominee is Ms. Teresa Ingram. Ms. Ingram is a longtime resident of Copper's Cove. She retired as a Copper's Cove I S D um teacher after thirty-two years of dedicated service. Ms. Ingram is currently a Realtor for Century Twenty-One Premium Realtors. She enjoys giving back to her community and would be a great asset to the Foundation Board. I thank you for providing me this time to present the two spectacular individuals on behalf of the CTC Foundation Board. We believe they will be assets to the Board themselves. Any questions about the two nominees?
None. Not about them, but when, we'll prove that at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a system to let them know how much we appreciate it?
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we're in constant contact with them on other, on this area, so we see them quite frequently.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is the Associate Marks and Marketing Studies proposal, Mr. Goodson. Oh, the Call of Work Advertising Project, Mr. Goodson. Sorry about that.
Captain and Warhammer members, Chancellor Yanopoulos, uh, I'm based outside of the marketing departments. Uh, the fourth option year of our contract with Call of Work branding and advertising is set to renew on September first, and we are seeking approval of that. Uh, we've been very pleased with the work that's done with us since we initiated this contract five years ago. Um, promoted the students, actual students in their advertising campaigns and the degree plans that we offer and the degree plans that these students are actually participating in and studying. They created the For Students of the Real World slogan, which to me really truly epitomizes our student heart and markets. Uh, students who have jobs, students who have kids, students who have families, issues and things like that. We're, that's encompassing for students of the real world, and I think that really speaks to the heart of our CTC student base. And uh, and now our current campaign talks about the affordability and the flexibility of our programs and our school, which again, hits home with For Students of the Real World. We're flexible with their, their family life, their issues, their work life, the military issues and things like to come up. So we're, we're competitive in our pricing, and I think those things really hit home. So anyway, the agency has gone beyond traditional advertising the last couple of years of just newspaper and TV spots and really hit social media. Digital advertising is where our students live these days, and they've done a great job of taking advantage of that. One example would be industrial technology. Um, we were approached uh by that department to uh provide them some advertising. They had some grant money, two thousand dollars in grant money. We went to the agency with that two thousand dollars. They came back with four thousand dollars worth of advertising out of that two thousand dollars. So industrial tech really got to think back to the buck with our agency. Uh, the contract is a services contract with no minimum annual commitments, and they currently provide branding such as our logo. They print out our logo and the graphic designs that we uh use in every aspect of the college, whether it be signage or printed materials. Um, they advertise again with TV and radio, and you can see the TV slots are currently running and the radio slots are currently running. Uh, the media buying and placement, media buying is really key. Uh, that's one thing that the agency really sells at, is the media buying for us. We don't have the uh access, the knowledge and the, and the contacts that they have to, to get us that thing for our buying. Um, also, as I mentioned, social media and the digital advertising, they're very key in that. Now, we're able to do some of the local advertising here in-house, uh, some of the local brochures and flyers and some of the local newspaper ads, but we really rely on the agency um with their knowledge, um, their complex design capabilities, uh, and their expertise in recommending and placing digital advertising and the media buys, again, which are really key to a successful campaign. So I've got a couple of examples I'd like to share with you, um, if uh, if you could play the uh radio spot.
There are two ways to go to a four-year university. One is to start at Central Texas College. Enjoy mom's home-cooked meals for two years, save thousands at the most affordable college in the region, and transfer to a university with more money in your pocket. And the other way is expensive. So go with option one at ctcb.edu. Central Texas College for Students of the Real World. CTC classes in Colleen, Fort Hood, and online start August twenty-second.
Again, a little high energy, little gimmick in there and, and talk about our affordability. And then we have a, a sample of a TV slot that is currently running. You may have seen it, it's running on a lot of the local. it, it's running on a lot of the local cable networks now.
Central Texas College students are movers. They make life-changing moves for themselves and their families, like saving thousands on college tuition. Now that's a good move, which helps them move up in their careers or start new ones, turning their passions into sweet success. Get moving at Central Texas College for students of the real world.
Again, using that high-tech and fast, I grab an approach, and those are just a couple of examples of what our agency has done for us. Again, we will certainly, and if you see in the advertisement there, those are actual students, those are our actual students at in open campus day. And our future plans for the coming months are to have another student photo shoot, but this time focus more on campus life, interreal sports, the chemistry labs, the dorms, and just to kind of give students an idea of everything that's on campus, not just the students, but everything these students can engage. And so that is the plan for a photo shoot coming up the next couple of months. Again, that's why we're seeking approval of the fourth and final option year for Call Burke Branding. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Yes, I was sort of complimenting you on the TV ad. It's very eye-catching and entertaining also. But as I watched it over the past couple of weeks, I wondered there, at the end, if there was some way you could, and I'm not sure it's at the end, I'm not that, but in your radio or whatever that person was, you hit the point of going on to a four-year school. This one sort of leaves you lingering, I think.
Well, the point of the TV spot is to get you here. It's a registration-based app. Registration is ongoing now, class starts the twenty-second. So we want to drive home the fact, we want you to register now.
Right. Would there be any benefit, you have one little quick line that will carry on to other educational opportunities?
In the future, we can create ads for that, but right now, again, this was strictly for registration purposes, not looking to get past, two years, not looking past your four-year degree. We want you in the door now.
And it's certainly, I'm a comment, nothing critical about it.
No, no, I get you. I totally get you, and I appreciate what you're saying, and yes, in the future, we can certainly consider, and we have talked about the ease of a two-year degree here and transferring to another four-year degree. We use ads in print form in that in the past, and that's not an issue. But to do that for this particular ad, that sort of costs us more money to channel it.
There's no more spending more money.
The ad campaign is going to end on the twenty-first, will be added the registration date.
Oh, I see. Okay. Another question I have on, McClintock College, so we're way old, they hit a great deal on the fact that they have Texas Tech there and Tarzan, is it? Yeah, I think. And maybe even, they mentioned later, maybe, but do we need to capitalize more on our being here, Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas?
Not, not the work we're doing, not based on, I don't think at all. We are doing some things with them that are combined, but we can present that today, that's not a part of that, and.
No, I think things are great.
Thank you. This is our fun to answer your question, Alan. We have combined some ads, social media ads, that show the ease of transferring from CTC to Texas A&amp;M, Central Texas. We use some of the students in these photo shoots, and we've created our own little slogan about transferring from here, completing your program here, and then how easy it is to go to Texas A&amp;M. We've done that on the social media app, so thank you, you did a great job. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, guys. Good to hear your time.
Now we'll go to the Associate of Arts Communication Studies proposal.
Chairman Weaver, Chancellor Yanopoulos, and the senior board members, we are very grateful to be in front of you today to present this proposed Associate of Arts in Communications Studies degree plan. Dr. Van Ness here has been working tirelessly to try to get this pushed forward, and we're very excited. We believe we have a very relevant program that is going to serve a need for students. We have found through Dr. Van Ness's research that having strong communication skills are very in demand by various employers across a multitude of different sections of the workforce. The number of careers prefer those interpersonal skills in all of their employees. And so with the foundation that we're going to present in this degree plan proposal, we believe that we're going to set the actionable foundation for multiple professions in various degree plans that carry on not only from the two-year degree plan, but also move into that four-year degree plan as students transition into a four-year university. Now, at this point in time, I'm going to yield the floor to Dr. Van Ness, the guy who created the program proposal, and to answer any questions that you have.
I am very excited to do this today. So just briefly, as an overview of the program, what we are proposing is securing associates of arts in communications studies, which would allow our students to graduate with their associate's degree in communications. It would allow them to transfer to a four-year university if they wanted to continue with their bachelor's degree, or it would segue them onto the workforce, with tons of great opportunities for them to get into work in social media, public relations, communications, and other organizations. So it's a great pathway to move forward, but it's also an end in itself. So we've done some research, and we've got the packet of course, that the associates in communications is across the board at many different colleges, and it's very popular. So at Texas Tech, it's the second-leading bachelor's degree program graduation. So there's definitely a need for it. Austin Community College offers it, as well as all of the University of Texas branches, and any of our four-year universities in Texas offer bachelor's degrees. So we would be providing our students with a pathway to continue on to those four-year universities, pursue those bachelor's degrees that they can finish here, which is, I think, really, really important. So it's not possible to determine how many students would want to take this program right now, because we have no basis to do those sorts of polling or surveys. However, just as, when I talk to students in class and I ask them, you know, what do you want to do, or what are you here for, oftentimes I hear students say they want a communications degree, and my heart sinks, because I know they have to leave here to get that. And so I want to keep them here. I want to give them the opportunity to finish that. So I think it's a very valuable program. It is also a pathway to TMUCT, so we can move our students over to Texas A&amp;MCT, and it's applicable to the BA in English or BS in the both studies. So we spoke to Texas A&amp;M, and they can take those credits and move them directly into those programs. So there's a list of colleges. We have all the programs in place already, we have all the courses in place already to implement this program. The only thing we do need to do is we need to implement a speech thirteen-eleven instructions communications program. It was approved by our curriculum review committee in February of twenty twenty. That course can be rolled out ready to go in January, so we can, we can easily get this program up and running without any additional work or resources. We do have a budget for you. We tried to be as fiscally conservative as possible. We also reviewed its availability, so we tried to be as correct in our numbers as we could be to present you an honest picture. So what we're looking at with our budget is our first two years implementing that new program, that speech thirteen-eleven program, using adjunct faculty to keep our costs down. So we would use our full-time faculty as we are currently, we have two full-time speech faculty, both are qualified to teach thirteen-eleven, but we would use our adjuncts to keep costs down those first two years, and then start to roll out the program across continental campuses, across the online campuses, so that we could bring in more students. So we took a conservative approach to starting slowly and ramping up the program. However, that's not to say that we might not have demand first, but we wanted to, again, take a pretty conservative approach. So in addition, we're looking at revenue, our revenue charts, again, we've had a few things I have liberty. And so when we're looking at funding, we're looking at twenty-five students per course, and we're looking at four courses within the first year, and then to continue to grow that program, eight courses in the second year, so to continue to grow. We were using tuition rates based on our current twenty twenty-one, so anything that increased with the new budget for next year wouldn't have been accounted for, but that would add to our revenue, of course. So that is our request for you to approve, yeah.
I see.
Do you have any questions?
Do you have a question? Does A&amp;M have a communications bachelor's degree?
A&amp;M does, Central Texas does not.
I thought that was true.
So we would be filling a need too. There are no colleges within a five-mile radius that offers a associate's communications or communications degree.
Is there a reason why they don't have a communications degree program in other universities?
I think Central Texas, because they're relatively newer and starting out, don't offer it yet. Doesn't mean that they wouldn't in the future, but every, most major community colleges and all of our four-year universities offer it, not the, not Central Texas.
I suspect Central Texas, if we started pushing students that way with that associate's degree, C and D.
I think that too. And it's a very valuable program. There's a lot of, a lot of interest in it, and there's lots of subject programs.
They would be great, sure, in Texas.
Are you willing to sign up?
It's another video, a small programs video.
I know, not yet, but hopefully in the future. I agree.
Well, this degree will transfer up A&amp;M, Central Texas to another bachelor's degree, just making communications, nothing lost. And by the way, all of, all of our, all of our degrees transfer and have a pathway up to Central Texas A&amp;M. Thank you to Dr. Garrett and Dr. Garrett, Dr. Brady, for all of them and their teams to get that done. It's taken us, what, eight years to make that happen, you know?
I'm glad to see us going after this degree, because I think it will be certainly attractive to a lot of our military and their dependents. Although we try to attract everyone in all of our programs, I think this would be especially interesting to them.
And this is a great opportunity for our students to be able to stay with us and to go and get available. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Last item on agenda is to recommend any topics about them in general or announcements. So you have a workshop?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thank you.
I don't need to do it, sir. Announcement for the regular board meeting scheduled Tuesday, August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, at one P M. Any workshop opportunities set under the twenty twenty twenty-two at one thirty-two? Don't understand the one thirty-two in the apartment, except for the, the script, is there?
No.
Yeah, there's, for that meeting from next week, correct? Well, this is, this is a Chinese one, yeah.
Like, there's AUSA.
There's AUSA, Chamber of Function, we thought we would partake in, in that. So lunch, AUSA, Chamber of Function, followed by a meeting like that.
Why, so like?
Followed by thirty minutes, yes.
Because the lunch is over at one five.
And we have, we have. Do you understand that, Charlie? We have a table for each of you, a spot for each of you at our tables, so. You'll get a, there's a. Get your own table. General Keating's going to talk about, I'm going to call his table, about Europe, what's going on in Europe, so. Should be quite interesting, should be. And everyone knows that the next time we meet, it'll be Ovi, on what we discussed this time, and we'll have two meetings. The first meeting will be, make sure that we're on board for the tax rate, because we can't establish the budget without an approved tax rate. The second meeting, within approved tax rate, we can approve the budget. So that's the reason why the two-step process is reviewed, because we do this every year sometimes, well, unless we forget what we did last year. Okay.
What's the question?
Okay. All right. With that, we withstand John.